I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council Meeting, Monday, March 3rd, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chamber. Agenda item one, Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call. Madam Secretary?
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Lozo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
And Counselor Rivas.
Present.
You have a quorum. Moving on to three, Consider and Accept Meeting Minutes of February 24, 2025. motion by Counsel Ortiz, seconded by Counselor Shenier. Any additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes of the meeting? If not, all those in favor? Excuse me, Counselor Marquetti.
But the only thing I wanted to point out is that the first reading on the performance surety deposit revolving from the first meeting would be 224, not 223. Says 223, so that's all. Thank you.
Any other additions, corrections, or deletions to those minutes? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee. Department of Public Works, Counselor Shenier.
No report, no meeting schedule.
Education Human Services, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report and no meeting scheduled this time.
Moving on to General Government, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report and no meeting scheduled.
Moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. We had a meeting on Tuesday, February 25th. There were seven items on tonight's agenda that were discussed, and we'll talk about them when we get to them.
Thank you. Moving on to Protection of Person's Property, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. No report, no meeting scheduled at that time.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I've just got one pleasant... We had a great meeting on the Rio's Taunt Lot Park, Recreation Park, that we're working on. I'd just like to thank Counselor Daniels, the Rio's family, Peg Dean. It was our first site visit, and a lot of great ideas came out of it, and we're looking forward to moving on it and start working on it and get some numbers and stuff like that. There are a lot of citizens in town that are willing to donate time, money, and efforts towards this cause. And again, I'd just like to thank Counselor Daniels for taking a lead on a lot of the... setting up the meetings and making sure we're all there, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager, any announcements?
I have no announcements.
Moving on to Presentations. Town Manager Substance Abuse Council Presentation by Deputy Chief Jose Dinghy is going to be canceled. We're going to move on to a meeting in the future. Moving on to Hazard Mitigation Plan Presentation by Chief Paul Lomondin. Chief?
So, yes, we've gone through the process here with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is a review after the last time it was adopted and approved here in Southbridge in 2019. I provided all you a little slide deck paperwork for your reviewing pleasure, also the PowerPoint up behind there. This was a grant that was put together by myself and positioned with FEMA and MEMA in around 2021, and worked very diligently on getting that approved. Basically, what it was going to do is to rewrite our Hazard Mitigation Plan, which has to be done for every five years. That grant was approved, and I'll just jump right into the Hazard Mitigation Plan as we get... Why are we here? So, I applied for the grants in 2022, 21, 22. In May of '23, I came about you guys to tell you about the grant and what it was all about. Basically, it was to review, draft, meet with stakeholders in our state, federal, and local governments. We announced a selection of 40... On that grant, we announced that there was a selection of 46 communities and tribal nations for building resilience infrastructure and communities directing technical assistance, which is the BRIC grant. This is... I was one of... Only one town in the state of Massachusetts, along with other towns in New England, but this is a very competitive program. Like I said, that's where we are today. So, we reviewed. Last year around this time, we met with the BRIC team, which is members from FEMA and MEMA, Massachusetts MEMA. It met with the DPW Director, Police Department, a representative from the Town Manager's office, and we worked diligently. I counted up today, there was about 37 meetings. Some of them were an hour, some of them were two hours. So, we've gotten in 200-plus hours of work into this draft that you've been electronically What is the Hazard Mitigation Plan? Formally, it's a strategic plan to identify and reduce risks from natural disasters. It's required to be updated every five years, as I've already said. It also helps secure federal funding for projects that improve town resilience. Why does this matter for Southbridge? Protecting lives and property. Southbridge faces risks for flooding, severe storms, and other natural disasters as we've experienced before. The first picture on that slide is from the flood of '55, and also then the second picture on the bottom is obviously from the tornado that we had go through town. This is a proactive Hazard Mitigation Plan that helps reduce damage, protect residents, and assure public safety. It's a description for us for what we do when these type of events happen. This also is without the approved Hazard Mitigation Plan, Southbridge cannot apply for FEMA Disaster Relief for Mitigation Grants. So, any one of these events, unfortunately, if it does occur, at the end of the day, we would not be able to get reimbursement for it if we did not have this plan approved by you guys tonight. This funding is critical for infrastructure improvements in emergency preparedness projects. So, why does this matter for Southbridge? Is it... It's meeting legal and planning requirements that are set forth by FEMA and MEMA. Approving this plan tonight ensures Southbridge stays compliant with prepared for future hazards, and it's keeping the town projects on track. Approval of this plan tonight is required for an upcoming Town Hall Generator project, wastewater improvements, and stormwater drainage projects. Basically, this is a real short presentation. I think we've talked about this in the past years. As we move forward, you know, the next steps for this, and I thank you all for taking the time tonight to look at this and reviewing the documents, but I'll be open for questions. But the next steps are Town Council adoption for the plan to be approved, move forward for key infrastructure projects, including the Town Hall Generator project, as I just said, and soon to be a wastewater improvement and stormwater drainage scoping studies. And this will provide us all continuing working together to ensure safer, more resilient Southbridge. There's my contact information on there, also on the handouts. If there's any questions... This is a 180-page document as a draft as it stands. I do have it on my phone for review. I did not print it, so I think you all have electronic copies. But this was definitely a well orchestrated event over the last little over a year to get this plan together. There were supposed to be representatives from MEMA and FEMA tonight, but with government shutdowns, they're all locked down. So, they were going to do a short presentation also, just to fill you in on all the extra stuff that we worked on. So, is there any open questions?
Are there any questions of the chief on this plan? If not, thank you very much.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. I did try to read most of your mitigation hazardous mitigation plan that you presented it to us. It's about 231 pages long. I got to about the appendixes, and then I said, "That's enough." I read it off. But I mean, it was a pretty good paper that you presented. Most... The first part of it was a history of Southbridge, the demographics, population, housing, income. So, it was pretty interesting. I think some of it should probably be updated, though. I mean, on page 15, median property value of 222,900. I don't... I think today, that's probably about 325,000 to 370,000. So, I think that probably needs to be a little updated at this point. It also, in there, it identified natural hazards, and some of them that caught my eye was dam failure, extreme heat, and flooding. Potential dam hazard. The Westfield Dam is the highest, largest storage capacity of all the dams that were listed. So, are there any problems with the Westfield Dam that you know of?
As of right now, through the chairman, as of right now, there's an updated report that comes out yearly from the engineers that do that dam. As of right now, they don't foresee any problems. They have regular seepage that happens. Over the last year, I think right around March or April, we had a very high level of water. They were... I contacted them, and they weren't too concerned about the levels of water. They were able to release when they needed to relieve pressure. But there's a lot of seepage, and that's very normal.
So, why are there sensors down there? I've gone down there, and there's sensors all over the dam area.
That is way out of my perspective.
All right. On page 48, the vulnerability to extreme heat and cold, high risk. This winter, we had several weeks of very extreme cold, and I did send out an email asking if the community center was going to be opened, but no one could give me an answer on if the community center was going to be open for people who maybe are homeless or people whose heat went out. A community center is supposed to be a facility in case of extreme cold, so I was just wondering why it wasn't open during that period.
So, during those periods of high cold and wind, and the town... There were several sites in town that were open. Community Center was open, the library was open during regular business hours. The last event, I believe, was it like in November? The... Actually, the YMCA had linked up with the director of the YMCA, and she opened the doors for people to come in and use the showers. So, there are places that are opening. It's just unfortunate part of it is that some of the people that need these type of environments to go to, they don't get the information. They don't have a phone, or they don't have the web access. So, the unfortunate part is trying to find these people to talk to them, and that's been... I've been on a couple of meetings with a resilience group here in town to try to figure out what the best way is to do that outreach.
All right. Thank you. Going on, there was a section on flooding, several areas identified as flooding hazards, including Worcester Street, right where the new fire station is going to go. Is there going to be any problem with flooding in that area?
I can't say yes or no, but according to the maps that were presented, actually right at the beginning of last year during these groups, group meetings, the new flood plane maps were released, and those are done by FEMA, and those were released, and it did not get to the fire station. Obviously, if you were around in '55, you probably saw the devastation that did happen on Worcester Street. I don't believe it went that far. I was not alive, so...
All right. Some of the reasons that were listed for the other areas in town that potential flooding, tree blockage, culvert, undersized inlets, general blockage, flooding issues behind Big Y. So, are there any plans to fix these problems, or is this just to identify the problems?
So, a little off topic of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, it does mention those items that you're talking about. And with the recent DPW Director situation, we've been in very long conversations with him to talk about, as I put in the PowerPoint, wastewater improvement projects, stormwater drainage, scoping studies. Those are the things that we're looking on right now. We looked at the plan itself, because it had to be completed and approved by the Town Council, but moving forward, the generator here at the Town Hall is very important. We're going to write a grant for that with the assistance of Peg Dean and the rest of the FEMA/MEMA people. And then we are going to work with the DPW group over there to find out about what the next steps are with the wastewater, stormwater projects. All of this stuff, this BRIC DTA group that I talked about in the beginning, will help us write all these things, help us write the grant, take a lot of man-hours off the people here in town to try to do this. And this was all a grant that we still have, about 18 months left for these people to work for us. So, those projects are in the chute, but we have to peck away as we keep going.
All right. And then towards the end of the part that I read, federal funding sources available all are FEMA, and let's hope that FEMA is still around in the next couple of months or even the next year, because from what I hear, there's plans to do away with it. Thank you. That's all I have.
I don't know the status politics on that whole thing. I probably hear the same thing that all of you do, too. FEMA and MEMA, as far as I know, MEMA right now, the group has been put on a shutdown or a hold. I just had a conversation with a MEMA representative today about this particular plan. So, MEMA, which is Massachusetts, is still working, and we're just keeping to move forward. Like I said, FEMA was supposed to do this whole presentation with me kind of, and they were going to do a real fancy one. So, I just said, "You know what? We can't let this go. This has a timeline, so we want to make sure that it gets pushed through so we can get this approved."
Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel Rivas.
Thank you through you. And I apologize, I haven't gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. It's a lot of pages, so this may already be in here, but I skimmed it and didn't... Couldn't locate it. But I know you just talked about some of the resources, you talked about work with the YMCA, and just thinking about some of our previous meetings and collaborations with resources, is that included in here, sort of like community-based resources for when an incident happens? And then the second part of that question, or second question to go along with that, are there any plans to present this to any of the community-based organizations or coalition so that they're aware of the plan?
So, the first part is that, yes, it is in there, and there's always plans to do that, to talk about the, you know, the early education and the education part of it. That is in there with the school department's emergency plans, along with anything else that happens in town. The plans are here, they're in black and white, but as we all know, things do... Can go awry on a particular storm or event, or how quickly things come on, so we have to adapt as best we can. Do the emergency stuff first, like the real life-threatening property safety, but those things are addressed in here.
Great. Thank you. And the second piece, are there any plans to, you know, kind of present this to like the Southbridge Community Connections Coalition, or the group that's meeting around the WCAC group?
The resilience group?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and yes. We will definitely... If you recall back, you maybe have received through the Town Hall, we did surveys for this plan, so surveys and surveys did come back from all that. There's a lot of good data in there, and we did include it into this plan, but I don't see why we can't put some of this, but not all of this, plan into an educational piece for community services that we're involved with. I think it's very important for these people to know that there's something there, and this is how we're going to try to handle it. I think in a perfect world, I said, even though the Hazard Mitigation Plan didn't specify it as the seven alarm fire, we rallied to get those people moved out of there. They got them off-site, brought them to the shelter, worked with MEMA and FEMA, and got them a whole bunch of resources after the fact. So, even though it's not written black and white in the plan, that's how it's supposed to work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, the chief? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the Town Council on any issues not on the agenda?
State your name and address. My name is John Podolsky, 3 Genescent Street. Later on today, you're going to be addressing the naming of a park or something. This isn't about the naming of the park, but recently, a dedicated, devoted, kindly gentleman that served this town, both in the school system and in the cable office, the late Bob Dupree, left this world. And I was speaking with the person that we would think someday, hopefully many years from now, we might consider naming that room back there after Paul Zodos. A lot of people realize Paul did a lot in building that chamber, but Paul himself would acknowledge, and did with me earlier today, that Bob Dupree, who was there 20 years before Paul, has been very dedicated. He was Mr. Cable, up at, you know, I think what we call audiovisual when it first came out, up at the high school. And tonight's probably not the night to do it, and I don't know exactly which committee one would go to, but please, in your wisdom as a group, consider it's nice when we name... Like Larry Hyman, I sometimes smile. I remember Mr. Hyman as a boy, down at the theater, very considerate man, served this town, served as a chairman, was not of the same faith that most of us, but was accepted with open arms. He was a good example of people. It's nice to name things after those that dedicate. Some of you are going to have buildings, not buildings, or maybe buildings, rooms named after you someday because of your dedication. Please consider, in your deliberations, the naming, maybe of the cable room back there after Bob Dupree. He was a very good man. Thank you.
Any other citizens who would like to address the Town Council? If there are none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Approve and Adopt the National Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Town of Southbridge in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, and authorize Town Council Chairman Scott Lozo to sign the mitigation plan on behalf of the Town of Southbridge Town Council. So moved. Most of Shenier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion? Did no discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, of all present. Moving on to Town, Vote to Enter Into An Agreement With Nancy Silva in Response to the Town's Call For Art Funded By New England Foundation For The Arts, and authorize the Town Manager to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chair?
Your motion?
It's all moved.
Your second?
Second.
Here's a motion, second.
Mr. Chair, would it be in order to make a motion to table this and send it back to Subcommittee for Further Study?
Second.
If that's the feeling. There's a motion to table...
I'll make that motion to table...
Motion to refer.
To refer. A motion to refer this back to Subcommittee for Further Study.
There's a motion to refer, and there's a second.
Second.
Right, Counsel Marquetti. Discussion? Right, Counsel Shenier.
The reason I did this is I supported this Subcommittee meeting last week, but since that time, I've heard a lot of negative comments regarding the style of the artwork. So, because of that, people being not happy with it, I would like to go back for further study to see if those people would come forward, explain what they would like to have, and for the committee to look at it if they want to change it, because there was actually some questions with committee about, you know, heat and cold and those kind of things. Ms. Dean did respond to those questions with us, but I think to bring those questions to a Subcommittee for Further Study would be, I think, a good thing for the community.
Did this go to Subcommittee already?
Yes.
Yes, it did. It was brought forward...
And the people that complained were at the Subcommittee?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion?
It was brought forward, a positive vote of two to one at that time.
Positive recommendation, let's deal with the motion to refer. Discussion on the motion to refer, then we'll go back to main motion cut.
I guess my question is, why wouldn't we be able to vote on this and then sort of ask the artists to consider, you know, adjustments? I don't understand why we would have to refer it back.
If I may?
Counsel Shenier.
Because if we vote on this tonight as presented, that particular kind of art is going to be what it is. We can bring it back to make suggestions to her, but if it's already been voted on and approved, I think it ties our hands to it. We all got the email, I think, over the weekend from a lady regarding it, and I just think it'd be good for the community. If we vote for this tonight, it goes as presented, and if we just send it back for further study, it would either come back and leave it alone, or make some changes.
Peg...
Chair, thank you through you. The time-wise, is any time-wise to delay any...
I think... Peg Dean, could you answer that question, please?
I apologize, I was talking to the fire chief. What was the question?
We're looking... The question was, there's a council that wants to refer back to Subcommittee for Further Study. Counselor Dow wanted to know if there was any timeframe, and I'm sure that Counsel Rivas probably has another question before we close it out, but Counsel Dow?
Just to see if any timeframe will miss anything if we go back. Do we have anything specific deadline for...
We have to complete the project by June. We already have the $15,000 in our account. It was paid upfront because we'd achieved these milestones of, you know, going through the course that we went through, this call for art. We learned how to do a call for art, we got the first bunch of money. Then, when we went into the call for art, when we published it, we got another chunk of money, and then the last milestone was that we actually, we recommended the artist to the Town Council, and they gave us the last chunk of money.
Counsel Dow?
Do you have any comment if we bring it back to the Subcommittee for More Discuss? Is that okay? How you feel about...
It's whatever's the Town Council's opinion. The selection committee was the redevelopment authority, and there were a few members that participated with them. They went out for these calls for art, they only got two responses back. The comment from Counsel Rivas, whether we can change that piece of art, we cannot. Yeah, so it is, you know, what they had proposed. And of the two, we can provide you the two that we were given. The New England Foundation of the Arts was impressed with the quality of the piece of art that we are recommending, and I understand that there'll always be opinions of art, but we tried to be, you know, we tried to have a public process with this from the start. We actually came up with, in the front end, sort of descriptions of, you know, what the town would want in a potential call for art, and we didn't get a lot of feedback during that process, even though we, you know, we'd asked for and looked for input and feedback back then. So, unfortunately, it's like a lot of projects where, you know, we hope to get public engagement on the front end of a project, and then it's when we get to the time of actual delivery that we unfortunately hear the feedback that we wish we would have gotten.
Continue, one more thing, Chair.
Right, Counsel Dow.
So, we have enough time to say till June to give some residents opportunity to speak and say their opinion to bring it back?
Sure. I would say absolutely. The only thing I'd be concerned about is if you started the process over. I don't know if you'd have enough time to actually publish another call for art and actually get back responses in time to be able to enter into the contract and have the installation done by June.
So, we have to go back from the beginning if we bring it back to the Subcommittee?
I apologize for not being clear. By all means, you have time for input if you wanted to give yourselves another month for input. I don't believe you'd have enough time to actually start the process over if you wanted to do another call for art, would be my opinion.
Thank you.
Counsel Shenier, and then Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I don't... Usually, I do follow social media, and Counsel Marquetti put the sculpture out on social media, and it was a tremendous amount of response to that particular item. Over the weekend, we got an email from a resident that... I could read it if you'd like, but I don't think it's necessary, that is opposed to it. So, I just felt that it was important to go back to Subcommittee and come, you know, come back for the next meeting. I don't have a problem just to see if we generate more interest for this. Shame on me, I only became aware of this last week when this came before us. We can't go to every meeting. I try to do as many meetings as I can, but I just think it's important after the response that we saw on social media and the email that I got over the weekend.
I do remember the last words of the council or the Subcommittee when we had approved the mural were, "In the next iteration of an art project, to please allow it to be historic, please allow it to have, you know, to capture sort of the feeling of what the Town Council wants." And so, I respect if you would like to get more feedback and make sure that this is in the vein of the current Town Council, by all means. The descriptions we did... The descriptions we did use were things like, you know, appreciating the town's history, our culture, our, you know, our current projects that were happening right there, you know, related to the rail trail and to the downtown development. So the sneaker, I think, was a theme that was, you know, the let's get going theme was, I think, probably more related to the rail trail. So it may not have captured that feeling of history, maybe, that the town was looking.
Counsel Reavis.
I'm not opposed to bringing it back. I definitely think, you know, people have a lot of opinions and they want to be heard and that's important. Could we bring in the artists and maybe thinking like maybe the artists can get some of the feedback and might be willing to adjust it in a way where, as a reflection of the feedback that we're, we'd be getting? Because I do understand, I do see the connection to the rail trail and the let's get moving. But I can understand where some of the criticism is coming from. And so maybe there's some common ground there where the artists could come in and just hear from the community.
It's whatever the will of the council is, by all means, if you would want to do it at a town council meeting or if you would want us to hold a separate meeting and ask the artists to attend, whatever you think is appropriate. I still don't believe, though, that the sculpture that they have presented can be altered.
So I am to understand that sending this back to subcommittee will not hurt the process of continuing. Because I've got to be honest with you, I don't think Counsel Shinier and I are artists. But if we have the time to look at it again, take a second chance at it, I think maybe the council should see what input we're going to get. You know, I mean, it's, we'll bring it up at the next meeting if that's okay with the council once we get it to subcommittee.
Mr. Chair, through you to Ms. Dean. I did forward you the email. You probably didn't get the email because I don't see a name on it. So I did forward you the email to look at it and understand at least what this particular lady thinks about the art. So wherever.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I mean, this is a piece of artwork. It's been vetted already by the Planning and Development Council. It's been vetted by Planning and Development Subcommittee. It passed in both of those bodies. You're going to, you know, we can open it up and we can have people come down and give their opinion on art. But I mean, if I put a Picasso up here, I'd get 100 different opinions on what it is or what it shouldn't be and why we shouldn't have it in the town. And I just, you know, this is a, this is a piece of art. It's supposed to, art, good art will have, will mean something to, different, different to everybody. So I don't see really what the utility of sending it back down to Planning and Development is, frankly. So I would vote against that.
Any further discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was the one who voted against this piece of art. And I said at the, at the meeting that I thought it was, it looked a little bizarre to me. I didn't care for it, but I do agree with Counsel, with Counsel Shinier, who said, you know, art is in the eye of the beholder. So I did put it on Facebook and I asked for people's opinion. And it wasn't, everybody's going to have a different opinion. It was overwhelmingly, people were against this artwork. It's a bizarre piece of artwork. There's also some issues about safety. I know the artist tried to, tried to tell us that, you know, it wasn't going to get too hot in the summertime. It's stainless steel. It's going to get hot. In the wintertime, it's going to get cold. And if you're going to have kids jumping through this thing, I am concerned about the safety of this artwork, not just because of how bizarre it looks, but it's just, it's something that, that could be dangerous for kids. And I don't see how that it would even be fun jumping through this thing. It's going to get marked up with graffiti. I know that the town manager said, well, the DPW can clean it. Well, another job that the DPW now is going to have to take on with all the other jobs that they have to do in this town. I also read about this artwork from this artist from Boston, that it was supposed to be something about the environment. It was environmentally friendly. Well, stainless steel is recyclable, but it also has vinyl on it and vinyl is very harmful for the environment. So I don't know how she figures vinyl is going to be good or economic or environmentally friendly. I don't know where she's coming with this. I do know that this artist built this for Concord Mass and now she's going to move it around from town to town. And each town is going to be paying for this. I wouldn't call it a sculpture. I would call it an installation. When I think of a sculpture, I think of something that's carved from marble or something. This is just a stainless steel contraption that you're supposed to jump in and out of. I don't really see the benefit of it. And an overwhelmingly amount of people on Facebook said they were opposed to this installation. Now, I know some people might say, well, you know, you'll get this on Facebook. Well, some counselors, they get their feedback from the local bar. They get their feedback from the coffee shops. They get their feedback from the pizza shop, from the pizza joint. I got my feedback from Facebook. I don't criticize anybody for where they get their feedback from. I hope you don't criticize me for where I get my feedback from. So I would like to refer this back. And I think some people have asked, why don't we just put a nice little garden there? Some trees, some benches. People could go over to Hope's and get some ice cream and sit there and have their ice cream. I don't think we need this bizarro piece of work down on that little pocket park. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Counsel Dowell. Go ahead, Counsel Dowell.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I agree with Counsel Shinier. Should go back to review by our citizen. I do not agree with Facebook because most of the people come and don't live in town. They have nothing to do. They sit on media and bash the people working hard or try to improve things or other. I don't think any project Dean working on is bizarre. I think she's doing a great job. She improved with all this time, almost four years working with her, all these grants, all these money, all these things she do. I do not agree with that word. Media, it's half, 80% is fake. They're not from town. They don't live in town. They're just coming. And I agree with Counsel Shinier to go back just to review one more time and then move forward with it. Thank you.
Counsel, excuse me, Peggy Dean.
Thank you. Never politics. If I could just clarify, the piece will be the town's. It is not to, to be taken back. It is temporary art because it's not, you know, what is permanent is relative. And so it is, it's temporary. We wanted to get something that would last a while, so we were happy with this piece. But it is, it is ours to keep. And in that vein, we could also move the piece. We wouldn't have to keep it there forever if we didn't want to. And then just, I guess, thinking out how this could play out. If for some reason the town didn't want to go forward, we could always surrender back the $15,000 to the New England Foundation for the Arts and just have that granite slab stay there. And there are benches already there and trees that have been installed in the park, in the pocket park.
Any other discussion by counsel? I'm very curious about this. Do we have to remove one in front of the library if they don't like this one? We have a sculpture on the library lawn that looks pretty dangerous. I don't know what it is, but I think it's beautiful when you drive by. And I'm just going to give you the Daniel's line, "Why not Southbridge?" Our work is in the eye of the beholder. When they painted the side of McCarthy's building, I looked at it and I thought I would have seen more of what Southbridge was, but it grew on you. And it ended up being part of Central Street. And I think the artwork on Main Street, I'm kind of like this about going back to subcommittee. We already went to subcommittee. If it went to subcommittee and was approved, I think I'm going to vote in favor of going through with it tonight. Any other discussion by anybody else? Roll call vote.
Counselor Shinier.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
No.
Counselor Dowell.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
No.
Counselor Lazo.
No.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Reavis. Five yes. Four no.
Refer back to subcommittee. Moving on to agenda item number 11. Vote to apply for the Urban Agenda Grant for $50,000 to reconstruct the Pocket Park at Main Street and Central Street and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counsel. Counsel Daniels.
Thank you. This was referred positively by a three zero vote.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to support this. I would just hope that we can change the name of these parks from Pocket Park. Call them something else. Name it after somebody. Whatever. I know Mario used to have his restaurant right there. Let's name it the Mario Pichoni Park or something instead of these Pocket Parks. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the main motion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 12. Vote to apply for a mass works expression of interest for $5,500,000 to reconstruct the portions of the Hamilton Street, Central Street, and Foster Street nearest Main Street to Main Street. And if approved, proceed with the full application and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This was voted positively to move forward by three to zero.
Any further discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to see some funding for downtown Southbridge. Been a long time coming. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dowell.
Say thank you for, Ms. Dean.
If I may, through you, Chair, this is all credit to the chair and to the previous DPW director, along with whomever else, the town manager, working together on this. I pushed the papers. That's all.
This is part of that restaurant district. We're going to work on Central Street so we can upgrade Central Street. Got a lot of ideas one way, white sidewalk on one side, one side parking. There's a lot of ideas in the pipe, but I think by taking Central Street, connecting Main Street to the TIPS project, I think it's going to be really, really good for Southbridge. And moving forward, there's going to be a lot of planning and development on it. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 13. Vote, vote the timely expenditure waiver from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for the CDBDGFY2223 grant year to allow us to then apply for the CDBGFY25 grant year and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Shinier, seconded by Dowell. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
This was voted unanimously to move forward.
Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote entering into an agreement with BSC Group for $255,750 using Mass Works funds to designate Phase Two of the River and Crane Street and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Dowell, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
This was voted unanimously forward.
Those unanimous at subcommittee, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to approve the use of $60,000 in Chapter 90 funds for police details during the River and Crane Street construction.
Second.
Motion by Dowell, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counsel Daniels.
This was voted to move forward, but by a two to one vote.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to submit, excuse me, vote the submission of a community planning grant expression of interest for $150,000 to support a patent zone initiative and accessory dwelling units and infill development and authorize the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Dowell, seconded by Ortiz. Discussion. Counsel Shinier.
Again, I want to ask the same question I probably asked the other night during subcommittee. Is this a, it's going to be a bylaw that is, has no enforcement, correct?
If I may, through you, Chair, I do not see the town planner. She was here. She must have had to step out for an emergency. This is not a bylaw. This is a request. Should I allow the town manager? Okay. This is, this is a request to create some tools to be able to be proactive in light of the, oh, in light of the ADU law.
So if I may, to go, my concern is just to make sure that we understand that it's going to be a bylaw that doesn't have enforcement.
Town manager.
Thank you. This is not a bylaw. Not a bylaw. Not a bylaw. This is simply a planning tool to assist for the infill in this, any ADUs that if somebody is, wants an ADU and they are in a district, they could simply contact the planner and there would be plans that are available. It is not a bylaw at all. It has nothing to do with the bylaw. ADUs are going to be allowable by right, correct? So all this is, is given a planning tool that individuals, sorry, I got a cramp in my leg, that individuals can contact us and go in and we'll have a catalog of plans that they can simply say, I want to build an ADU. They could say what area they are and there'd be a bunch of different plans that they can go that are already pre-approved by the planning, by the building department and would speed up the building process.
No, I'm unsure what's been said already, but the purpose of this is to be able to give residents more tools. The idea of allowing these as permit-ready plans would have an average person be able to more easily build one of these units on their own property if they want, be that in a location that already has a single-family home or in the cases when there's going to be smaller infill lots that the new Affordable Homes Act also allows for development on previously undersized lots. So, and the intention of this, too, is to be specific to Southbridge. That's the purpose of a planning process, that there'd be input from the community. There would be professionals that look at the current neighborhood character and give input on what would already fit with what exists here and what people like about Southbridge and would want to add in smaller unit housing.
Counsel Kelly and then Counsel Reavis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So as I understand it, really what this is, is if I decide I, my, my family decides we're going to bring my mother-in-law into, into our space, but we need a place for her to live. She wants to live on her own. So I want to build an, I want to put an ADU on my property. I can go out and hire somebody to design one for me, I suppose, or I could call up the building department and say, do you have plans already ready-made that I can use? And the building department will say, yes, sir, we do have plans. And why don't you come down and take a look at the plans? We have several. They're all pre-approved and these will, any one of these will work. So I've just saved myself some money by not having to have, hire somebody to do the design for myself, for it. Doesn't prevent anybody from doing a design, doing their own work and plan and then having, getting it approved by the building department. But this is a way to really, kind of a shortcut for people as an option. And that's all it is, is an option. Am I correct in that?
Yes, that is the intention.
Thank you.
Counsel Reavis.
Thank you, through you.
Thank you, through you, I, I did listen to the here, to the Subcommittee hearing, you mentioned developers had already contacted you about the accessory dwelling, and is it my understanding that, uh, this would apply also to, or is that the in, infill development, where this gives them an incentive to keep to the character of our community, and, um, because it would facilitate the process of them going through the building inspector and the planning board, is that, is that correct?
Um, yes, uh, so, uh, the, there have been, um, through the building department requests for building permits for ADUs, uh, the building department could speak more on, on those numbers, uh, we will have to, as part of the new law, report those numbers to the state, so we'll be tracking those as they come in, um, but yes, so, the, the intention, um, of, of this as a planning process would be to, um, give people the opportunity to have something that looks like, uh, the community does already, um, there's no, there's no real, um, way of managing aesthetics through, through the way that the current law is, um, the state discourages that, so, um, this is a way to encourage it without imposing it.
Great, thank you, one more thing, I, I see it as a resource in a couple of different ways, and I do think, I agree with Counsel Kelly, sort of like, you know, our residents who may want to, um, build an ADU for their family member, but also as an incentive for a developer that is thinking of developing, um, you know, areas, and, and kind of incentivizing them to, to kind of, you know, remain with the character of what is already there, so I do see it as a benefit to our community in multiple ways, thank you, thank you.
Counsel Shania, then Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I am going to support this initiative, I just wanna make sure that the people out there understand that it's a voluntary, uh, option that they have to use for building an ADU, I, I'm not gonna say I mistrust government, because I'm here as an elected official, but I have yet to see a zoning issue that is something that's not enforceable or enfor- you know what I'm trying to say, most zoning, uh, actions are an enforceable action, so I just wanna make sure, that's all, I'm fully gonna support this, I just wanna make sure that people understand that this is an option that they can use, but they don't have to, thank you.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this was unanimously reported out of committee.
Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17, amend the Southbridge Code of Bylaws, Chapter 11, Departmental Revolving Funds, Section 11-500, authorize revolving funds by eliminating and striking out 11-500.3, total maintenance revolving fund, section and all subsections due to the creation of the Solid Waste and Disposal Enterprise Fund. Do you have a motion? No, there's no motion, just a, a deletion?
The first, it's a-
Discussion, any amendments?
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion that, uh, that the article doesn't say vote, that's where it gets confusing?
No, it's, it's supposed to be scratched out, that's why I didn't read it as vote, there's no vote, it's just, it's just a second reading, if you wanna amend anything or, or deal with the, uh, the, um, the chapter and section.
Thank you.
Of deleting some parts. Any other discussion? If not, we'll consider it the second reading. Moving on to agenda item number 18, again, the same here, amend the Southbridge Code of Bylaws, Chapter 11, Department Revolving Funds, Section 11-500, authorize revolving funds ad- by adding the following section, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, 11-500.9.1.1 Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund, 11-500.9.1 Fund Name, there shall be a separate fund called the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund, authorized for use by the municipal treasurer, 11-500.9.2 Revenues, the town accountant shall establish the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund as a separate account, the treasurer may accept cash or non-cash guarantees that may be made to secure performance of the particular obligations, a guarantee would include a letter of credit, performance bond or insurance policy, 11-500.9.3 Purposes and expenditures, to secure restoration of a public roadway under a street opening permit, or completion of work required under a drainage or driveway permit within a specified time, the intent is to return the amount of the deposit if the work is satisfactorily performed, but if there is a default, for the municipality to be able to use it to complete the work if it so chooses, 11-500.9.4 Other requirements slash reports, none, 11-500.9.5 Fiscal Years, the Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund shall operate for fiscal years that begin on or after July 1st, 2024, and that is the second reading, March 3rd, 2025.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just wanna make sure that this one and the previous one, that the first reading was the 24th, not the 23rd, thank you.
Thank you. Town Manager.
There'll be one change that I know, um, on this, it should be 11-500.9 Performance Surety Deposit Revolving Fund, there shouldn't be a .1.1, so.
We'll have, that's a typo, we'll take care of that in the third reading, there's no amendment on this, we'll consider this the second reading, anybody would like to amend, we usually amend on the third reading. Moving on to agenda item number 19, Council's Forum, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, so I'd just like to comment about, uh, what's going on in the world today, a lot of people worried, a lot of people happy, a lot of, so, and there's a lot of confusion, I think, out there, what's going on at the federal level, um, I just like to remind people that the core of our democracy is right here at the local level, and, um, we see a lot of things on TV, uh, television tends to focus on the macro, so they tend to focus on the federal government, so people watch the news all day, people who, whether it's CNN or Fox News, they're really getting a macro ver- version of what's going on in the world, but where the rubber meets the road is right here, in the local level, what happens here in South, in, in Southbridge, what happens at your, in your local government is most likely to directly impact you, so, I encourage people, that if you wanna get involved in something, get involved in, in local government, come down here, look, I'm, I'm looking out, right now, I see three people in the audience, and, uh, why don't we have, if we're so interested in politics, why don't I see this room filled? This is where, this is where you can have your voice heard, right here at the local, in the local level, level, come down here and talk at, 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 at Citizens Forum, if you have, have something to say, but please, participate, participate, don't just start, don't just scream at each other on Facebook, thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I, I attended a Southbridge Business Partnership meeting last Wednesday, and I wanna just encourage people to, our, you know, send new businesses to their Facebook page, to join as members, I'm pleased to see that they have some new ideas on recruiting and, um, marketing, uh, their, the business partnership, and ways to sort of welcome more businesses into the community, and so, but there are a lot of businesses that are in town that are not part of the partnership, and I'd love for those businesses to join us, it is a great way to network with other businesses in town, and to get support, and, you know, have your business have more visibility with, you know, events like Autumn Fest, and being part of Autumn Fest, and even if you're a new business and you don't have a brick and mortar space, Autumn Fest is a great way to, you know, get known around the community, and then possibly think about opening a location in town, and so, I am happy to go to those meetings and be part of the business partnership, and I think that the group is expanding, and I'm seeing much, much more smaller, new businesses being part of the partnership, and that is encouraging, uh, to our community. I also wanna encourage, and just to bounce off Counsel Kelly and people being involved, we do have an election coming in June, making sure that people who aren't registered to vote, please register, uh, and making sure that your vote is your voice, and not participating, you know, doesn't, doesn't help us change anything in the community, and making sure that if you have people that aren't registered, that they do want, they do get registered and, and participate in our municipal government, at least in that small way. And that is all I have, thank you.
Counsel Ortiz.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Surprise. Counsel Shania.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I totally agree with Counsel Kelly and his comments regarding participation in getting involved in your community, it's difficult sometimes to, to, try and understand the way people are feeling, and you listen to Facebook, 'cause most of the time you hear negative, negative stuff, and you're not sure, you're gonna have an opportunity in the very near future at a meeting to voice your concerns about the act, if you don't come to the meeting, voice your concerns, and it moves forward, and you're not happy with it, you got nothing to complain about if you don't show up, so please, get involved in your community, come to the meetings, and get involved, thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Uh, nothing at that time, thank you.
Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, um, I also agree with Counsel Kelly and Counsel Rivas, um, what they've said is straightforward, factual, and, uh, I've been hopping on it as well in the past, um, and I guess we'll keep on hopping on it, because it, uh, it needs to be done, and we need people here, quite frankly, we need people here, um, so with the election coming up in June, it's time to start getting, um, aware of who the people are, the candidates are gonna be, we need the candidates to step up and, uh, make themselves known as well, um, but we need the people in town to pay attention to who's running, what they're running for, um, and make their decisions based upon that, Counsel Shania is right, you have no right to complain if you didn't say anything or step up to begin with, um, when the time was ripe to be stepping up and saying something. On a different note, I'd like to graciously thank Counsel Lazzo for the, uh, for the thank yous, for being involved with the, uh, Rios Park Project, um, it's, it's, it's easy, this is, this is what you're, you run for, um, this is what you wanna be elected to do, um, this is the fun part, the Rios family, um, has been in town for years and years and years, they suffered a tragic loss, and they wish to make a memorial to their son. Um, I encourage people to stay alert to announcements here at council, and to, um, be prepared to donate, if they would like, uh, to the project, I know that, uh, there's already businesses in town that have talked about donating their services, um, it's a, it's a wonderful project, and it's really a, a nice way of pulling together for a, a nice, nice family, and again, I thank Counsel Lazzo, but, um, this is easy, there's nothing to thank me for, I'm glad to be doing it, and, um, I also thank Counsel Lazzo for his co-leading, I guess we're really co-chairs, um, and, um, he's, uh, he's, he stepped up, he's got some great ideas about what needs to be done, and he's really stepped up and, uh, stepped into the fray, so it's a good project, please be aware of it, and, uh, thank you again, that's all I have.
Thank you for those kind words, and it's a pleasure working with you, John. Counsel Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to comment about this, um, residents should come here and speak their mind, if they wanna be heard, if they want the counselors to do something, it was just a couple of weeks ago, we had a large number of people out here in the audience, and they did not want us to vote, no confidence in the receiver, a lot of them got up there and spoke, the whole room was filled, and yet the counselors voted no confidence anyway, so, I can almost understand why people say, why should I bother coming here, if what I want to have happen does not happen? I don't see anything wrong with Facebook either, I checked out a lot of those people on Facebook, most of them live right here in Southbridge, maybe they can't come here tonight, but they still have a right to speak out, and why shouldn't they do it on there, if when they come here, the counselors don't listen? So the rubber meets the road, it sure does, unless the counselors don't care, then I guess, uh, there's no, there's no rubber on the wheels, I guess. Uh, I would like to speak about the building, school building, district master plan that we talked about last October, I was just wondering if there was an update on that, has there been any discussions, any plans on that, uh, district master plan at this point, if the town manager wants to get back to me on that, I'd appreciate it, uh, also, um, the East Main Street construction that's been gone going this winter is going to be a major problem this summer, I can see it happening, I went downtown one day, the traffic was backed up all the way to Main Street, all the way to Central Street, so, I don't know if we could look at some kind of a bypass, I know the sign says, seek alternate routes, there are no other alternate routes, that's the only way down there, you wanna get to Big Y, it's gonna hurt Big Y, it's gonna hit the, hurt the whole, uh, Fair Plaza, it's gonna hurt RMG, it's gonna hurt Golden Greek, I know there are a couple of roads that will take you over there, but I'm not sure that they're completed yet, there's one off Amora Street, goes through the, it goes through the, uh, golf course, that is a road, but I don't think it's completed, there's also Tipton Rock, if anybody has gone on Tipton Rock, I have, there's a part where it ends, I don't know, I, if you look on the assessor's map, it looks like it goes all the way through, but if you try and drive it, there's no way, so, uh, there's just gotta be a way we can look into, I'd appreciate it, if we could have Butch look into providing an alternate way, because it's gonna be quite a mess this summer with that construction, I know it has to be done, but, I'm just looking for a way to stop this from, uh, backing up all the way past the Rotary, and, uh, if he wants to answer, that's fine.
How late do you have in it?
I'm fine, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, through you, um, we have already had a meeting on that, we have met with, uh, Chris McClure, who's the engineer, uh, Butch, the police department, and the town manager's office, to talk about that construction season, about, we're well aware of it, um, you're right, there is no easy way, we're talking about ways to at least have some communication out to the public that these are the heavy days, uh, there will be challenges, because they are gonna be going right through the center of the road to put drainage in, so, uh, we're aware of that, we're gonna try to mitigate as best we can, some additional signage, and, uh, see if small guys wanna take an alternate route, but we do not wanna put large tractor trailers going up, uh, past Tory Road and all that, because that would just, uh, hamper those roads, but we are, we have already had a meeting on that, to talk about that, uh, the goal, uh, is to have this construction done by June, so that it does not go through summer, so that is, that is the goal, that is the, by, by the contract, they're, they're asked to be done by June, and that is the goal.
Good to hear, thank you.
They wanted the roads done, it's gonna be very inconvenient, and this is only one of them, this is the worst road that we're gonna be paving, um, in the paving plan moving forward, and I tell people, you beat our doors down to do roads, we're doing roads, this one's gonna be the most uncomfortable road that you're gonna do, because of the traffic, there is no way around unless you go Tory, but, you just gotta bite the bullet, be patient, and then once that main drag's done, then we're gonna go Mechanic Street, up Main, down north, you wanted the roads done, you're gonna get them done, this council, and the last past five councils, have put roads in the forefront, and, uh, we're gonna get them done, and I smile when people complain, because they were complaining more about how bad the road was, so now we're gonna complain about what the traffic is, enjoy the roads being done in your town, they're gonna look wonderful when they're done.
Just looking for a way around, that's all, just looking for a way to bypass it, that's all.
There isn't one.
Thank you, Chair, through you, uh, I agree with Counsel Marketti, uh, residents and citizens always have a right to speak at the meeting, after the meeting, it's a free country, you can always say your opinion, make a comment, but not necessarily it's, it's right, regardless that- Regardless, the people was full here, it was only two from Southbridge, and the rest from out of town. I agree with you, it was a lot of people attend. They don't have no clue about our school system. They only hire a new, six months, one year, not even, and they come here to support because it's a new hire in, and it was ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent doesn't live in town. That's why we continue our vote.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was great, Counselor Dow, it was exactly what I was going to mention, the previous speaker said something about the full chambers of non-residents. I wanted to bring up the schools tonight, because we're going into a hard budget season here, where we've already been told that health insurance is going up, and we're going to have to pay around $700,000 for that, we need to find some money for that on the town side, and then, you know, miniature, minimum school expenditure is going to go up a little bit, and there's nothing we can do to really cut the school budget. So I think in the spirit of everybody taking a hard look at government money and your tax dollars and where they're going, I think there needs to be a little more accountability on the school side for how they're spending their money. So I just want to bring everybody back a little bit to understand what the vote of no confidence and how it came about. We had that early December meeting, myself, the chairman, town manager, other members of the school committee with Russell Johnston, where they had some pushback on subcommittees and all those things, we've told you about this. And then a week later, Commissioner Johnston announced that he's not going to be coming back as acting commissioner. A month or month and a half goes by, we're waiting for a, a meeting in early February, had a couple resignations from the school committee for, and for good reason. And at the end of January, we, on the twenty-seventh, we did the vote of no confidence, it passed with a two-thirds majority. In the following week, on February third, we had new school committee members appointed. And then on February fifth, Russell Johnston canceled the meeting we were supposed to have with us due to snow. He's failed to reschedule, and apparently is all set for his, his next term somewhere else. And February seventh, they bring out some good news. They announced that Jill Lombardi won the Milken Educator Award, which she very well deserves. And I just want people to understand that this award coming out doesn't shine a positive light on anything that Dr. Vilar or his administration has done. And I'm probably one of the only qualified people that can tell you that, not because I'm a former member of the school committee or the chairman of Education Human Services, but because when Dr. Vilar hired me in 2018 to fill a sixth grade science vacancy, I taught half the sixth grade while first-year teacher Jill Lombardi taught the other half of the sixth grade. And she wrote my curriculum because I wasn't prepared to jump into science, that's not my forte, but I helped out where I could. So I watched her take leadership roles on the, she was a tennis coach, she totally revitalized that program and her team on the other team, I was on the other half, and there was no support at all from central office. Dr. Vilar is lucky that he has his name as superintendent on this award for his educator, Jill Lombardi. She deserves this award on her own merit and her own talents, and I'm glad she won it. Now, fast forward to today, we have no meeting with the state, the state hasn't had a permanent commissioner in how long, and now the turnover is in their court. So the whole thing is still a mess, nothing good is happening, their budget is going up. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to be requesting all the positions in administration and in central office, their job descriptions and their salary amounts. Don't even really need to know their names, just need to know where the misuse of your state, federal, and local tax dollars are going on this school side, because you can't cut minimum school expenditure, but you certainly can hold Dr. Vilar accountable for misuse of government money in putting everything at the top and not giving teachers the proper support that they need or our children. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You gave them a chance to speak after I spoke?
Just raise your hand.
Okay, I'm raising my hand.
Go ahead, Counselor. You're very cranky tonight, calm down.
In the words, in the words of Counselor Lazo, this is the biggest bunch of bullshit I ever heard. A lot of those people that were out there in the audience, a lot of them I knew, and they were residents. The other ones who were speaking, they were town employees. Are you going to tell me now, we can't listen to town employees, they don't matter? As far as Counselor Montigny goes, I guess next he's going to be coming out with his chainsaw, jumping up and down, saying, "Oh, let's cut this and let's cut that."
You're stuck on the national level, stick with, keep your local.
Yeah, yeah, whatever. I just think it's.
Counselor Marketti, I understand your frustration.
I'm all done, thank you very much.
I understand your frustration. I think what we have to understand is, even when we had a packed chamber, whether we agreed or disagreed with speakers, in town, out of town, whatever it was, we listened to everybody. And the thing is, when we listened to everybody, everybody got to talk, we didn't shut anybody off, and then we voted our conscience what we thought was going on. If anybody thinks being the lowest MCAT scores in the state is an accomplishment, you've got to go back to school. It's going to change. We need our schools in charge of our own schools and our own destiny. Everybody knows that. How we get there, there's the problem. State's got a revolving door, that's what they said they took us over for. Now they have the revolving door at the commissioners' level. I sit back and I look at it. I think Counselor Kelly today said it best. The state and federal government are out of touch. Where the tire hits the road is right here in local government. Whether we always agree or disagree, or wherever you get your information, or I get mine, we try to serve the local people the best we can. I know we don't always agree, and I know we have different ways of getting our, our information. Going forward, let's just keep going. This town has turned a corner. Whether we agree on Vilar or, or the schools, despite that, the roads are getting done. The sewer plant has a new contractor, DPW is being reorganized, our finance department is back. Shake your head all you want, what's happened in the last six, six years has been great accomplishments, we're heading in the right direction. We're not there yet, but we will continue to work on it. And if other people want to run for office, run for office, it's a great experience. And then, you know, people that don't want to hold office, why don't you grab yourself a candidate that's running and hang some signs and work for those candidates? Whatever candidate you like, it's a matter of choice, and I think we're all going to make our own choices. Tonight we had issues that we don't all agree on, but you have to smile at one another and know one thing.
My road's not getting.
We don't get paid to do this job, and we do a lot of work and put a lot of time in.
My road's not getting done. That's the only reason I'm shaking my head.
It's because you're on a council, that's conflict of interest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just kidding, Counselor, just kidding. We need to get a sense of humor. All right, I'm moving on to agenda item number twenty, discussion next meeting date. Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next meeting date is Monday, March seventeenth, 2025, at seven PM in the town council chambers.
Twenty-one, adjournment.
No move.
Motion by Shenyah, seconded by Dow. All those in favor?
Aye.
Appalled, can hear him, Mr. Wall President.